If y'all can bear with me, I wasn't aware Judge Butler wasn't gonna be here today. Very sorry. I welcome you all to Commissioner's Court. On November 2014, 9:00 a.m., we're gonna go ahead and begin. Roll call, Commissioner Yawer.
Here.
Judge Pro Tem James Rosales, I'm here. Commissioner Dubick.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Shindel.
Here.
Judge Butler, I'm very aware that he resigned yesterday. Number three, can we have an opening prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all our blessings. We thank you for the progress made in the form of coming in the past year. And thank you for the recent reins received. We ask that you be with us today as we make decisions about the county. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the next item, I wanna read Judge Butler's resignation. It states, "Richard M. Butler, County Judge, November 6, 2014. To Commissioner Shelby Dubick, Commissioner A.T. Pete Yawer, Commissioner James Rosales, Commissioner Tracy Shindel, 210 West Calvert, Suite 160, Karn City, Texas, 78118. Dear Commissioners, The citizens of Karnes County have elected Walter R. Long, Jr. to be the next county judge of Karnes County. I have known and respected Walter for over thirty-five years, and I am confident he would do a great job as county judge. In order for Mr. Long to be able to hit the ground running as he tackles the myriad of complex and challenging issues that face the county, I believe it would be best for Karnes County for him to assume office immediately. Therefore, I am submitting my resignation as Karnes County Judge effective 5:00 p.m. November 11, 2014. I want to thank each one of you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as county judge of Karnes County for the last few months. I have learned much about local government and the process, and have come away with many great friends among the office holders and staff working for Karnes County. I would say that I will miss all of you, but I will only be a couple of blocks away and intend to stay in close touch with all of you. I know each of you will be working together with Walter Long to lead Karnes County into in a prosperous future. Very truly yours, Richard M. Butler." If any citizens want to be heard right now, y'all can be heard on any of the agenda items if not, wait to the agenda items. Yes, ma'am.
I want to be heard now.
Okay. Come right ahead, ma'am.
This is off agenda, but to me, it's a very important thing. On the last meeting, we had, um... We had Reed Smith, the GEO from Central Region VP, come here and speak about wanting to expand the ICE unit. And when I said something about Dilly, um, turning the man camp into one of those facilities and adding on, he turned around to me and said, "They're building a gymnasium." Well, that did not sound right to me because I knew it wasn't true. And so Monday morning, I got up and I said, "I'm gonna do something about this." So I called the city hall in Dilly, Texas. I spoke to Noel Perez. He's a city administrator. And I was telling him about them wanting to expand, and I asked if he could give me information on this Dilly unit. And so he was very, very nice, a very nice gentleman. And he said, and so I told him what Mr. Reed had said, and he said, "Oh, no." He said, "We're adding fifty and a half acres to the man camp." And we talked a little bit more, but I didn't write down any figures. So, and he said, "Anytime I drop through, if we came through Dilly, to drop in." So this Monday morning, I took him up on his offer. I took my dozen dollars from Good Faith. And, um, he's just such a gentleman, and he's just so knowledgeable. He told me that, um, they are, right now, they have four hundred and eighty beds available in the man camp. They're little cabins. And then they are going to put a modular building on there that will hold one thousand nine hundred and twenty more people. And, um, he said they've got plenty of water, their utilities are good there. He said if Karnes County wants to, they can send them there. Because they've got, they've got four wells, deep wells, and they're sinking another one. Right now, they've got a million gallons of ground storage, and they've got three hundred and twenty-five thousand elevating units. And he also told me that this is, uh, I guess, one that are putting this in is Southwest Corporations, Southwest Corrections Corporation of America, which I believe is part of Homeland Security. And he also told me, and I don't think this is really for publication, that Red McCombs and his partner, Mr. Coons, are the owners of that property. And it's on a four-and-a-half-year, I mean, on a four-year lease. And I just found that interesting. He said, "If we wanna send them to, uh, Dilly to do it, the people there are willing to take them because they have in their contract no local release and none of them going to their schools." And I just wanted to report that to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number six, reading of the minutes. We're gonna do that the next time. Moving on over to number seven, canvass on November 4, 2014, general election and authorization for signature by presiding. Just give me one second. Vi? Is Vi in here?
Yeah.
Go ahead, okay.
Yeah, do it after number eight will be signed.
Authorization for signature by presiding officer of the canvassing authority by Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I meant to get those out to you, Lord, I got junkies on the other side. Anybody else want one? I've got it. Okay, on November the 12th, I mean, on November the 4th, 2014, obviously, the general election was canvassed, and so asking or was held, and it's now ready to be canvassed. So what we need to do today is accept the canvas. And I wanted to just do, just very brief little highlights about it that some people might be interested. We had a total of two thousand five hundred ninety-three voters that came out in Karnes County to vote. That's, uh, out of, we have close to eight thousand, like seven thousand nine hundred and something registered voters, so that's not even half of our registered voters that came out to vote. And, uh, of course, the results are, are within the canvas, and we had several officers that were already elected because of the primaries and the fact that there was no one running against them, so those were on the ballot in that manner. So what we, what I need to do today, I have a, a order for you to sign that just says, "I, James Rosales, Judge Pro Tem of Karnes County, Texas, Commissioner's Court, on November 12, 2014, at Karn City, Texas, met with Commissioner's Court sitting at the canvassing board, as the canvassing board, to canvass the general election held on November 4, 2014." And then I'll need to put in who makes the motion. I hereby certify that the tabulation returned is true and correct as shown by the attached canvas report tabulated and printed from the hard voting system program used for processing electronic voting media on election night for the general election. And this includes, just as information, we had seven voters who voted provisional. Some of those were not registered voters, and so obviously their vote did not count. The majority, I think it was like four out of the seven that were counted, so these numbers will be a little off from election night in case people are wondering what those are. I just need a motion, and we need to fill those in.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mike, that one.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes.
So we need to fill them.
Right here, arrest.
Yeah, and I just need to fill in Shelby and Tracy's.
Thank you, ma'am. Herb. Where's Herb?
Up here.
Hi. I found you out there. On item number eight, right here, the resignation from Butler. It's not on here to accept it, but do you want us to go ahead to make a vote on it and accept that in public? Or do we have to wait for it to be on here? Because it's not on here anywhere. It's here to appoint another one, but they're not want to accept it.
I don't know the answer, but I think we have to have it on the agenda. My, let's see. I'll find out in about ten minutes. So that can do.
Okay. The other reason is because we're gonna, how was that? We're gonna appoint one right now, and I wanted to know, to go ahead and accept his before we actually appoint another one.
We have to, can I have about ten minutes?
Sure. So you want us just to go ahead and keep going on and skip that one?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Herb.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna skip, as y'all heard, number eight for now. Vi?
Your next question, number 24.
Yes. I asked Commissioner Rosales to move my treasures report to the front because we have power technology in our office right now doing the conversion, and my new employee started last week Wednesday night on a late first, granted too long by ourselves in case they have questions and I need to be there. So I've asked to move my September and October reports up to the front.
That'll be fine.
And otherwise, I've got to leave this morning, and I apologize for not being able to do it sooner.
You put him on here this morning?
Yes. I thought I should have popped.
One first. There's two of them.
One. 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 One.
And just a little side note, I did leave you a treasures report. Due to my workload, the bank reconciliation has not been done. I'm trying to get that done as soon as I can, but every time I turn around, it's payroll week. And so since September 12th, I've been by myself, so those will get done. So if there's any adjustments that need to be done in the future, Audra and I will make sure you're aware of those adjustments.
I picked up my book from the house.
Vi, in your report, you show your second or third paragraph after the workload, says the insurance was suspended due to our thing with October being late. It's been reinstated under laws of coverage.
Yes.
I've had several phone calls by people, not being able to, as early as yesterday, late's the best one I had, that they couldn't get their medication, and they couldn't get their some services they needed.
Everything should have been back up and running on Monday morning. It's just the payroll system automatically spits out the premiums for them, and then I have to reconcile them and get them to the auditor's office to sign them. And if I can't reconcile, then she won't sign them, so we, I'm trying to get that done again. Like I say, we've got power technology here this week. Next week's payroll. Following week, it's a three-day weekend, or a three-day work week, I'm sorry, because it's Thanksgiving, and then we're back to December 1st. So I hope that will happen again.
So we had, has the check been signed?
Yes. No, not for November premiums, no. October's premiums were signed, and we overnighted them, the majority of them, last week to them. Karina with Justice Williams Office is working on them, getting reinstated with those mark. So Bartman was also, but November premiums had already been mailed, but I just can't get to them. I just, it's just too much for me to, last week is payroll, next week is payroll again. Elaine will have no idea how to do that. I'm gonna have to do that by myself again.
Your statement gone?
Well, Elaine said and started last week Wednesday, but she's with Tyler right now, Technology, trying to learn the new payroll system. So I'm not even teaching her how to do anything on the old system because I'm just wasting my time and her time to try to learn an old system we're not gonna be using come mid-December. So I'm still kind of by myself, having to do everything, receiving the money and everything. We're still getting, working on getting her bonded in the payroll next week. You know, we got twenty new employees. I got, I worked till 6:30 last night, just trying to get some of them so they could sign in at time clock plus.
Yeah, I see.
And we're, and the Sheriff's Department's probably getting ready to hire some more, probably soon, so that's gonna uplog me too. And I have no idea when y'all plan on filling that HR position, if you're even gonna fill that HR position, so I'm drowning, so.
I guess we can accept it.
I can accept it, I can't approve it.
He's not.
Okay. It says, agenda says approve.
I'm going to be just accept it, but then based on the comment that the bank statement said we're even reconciling.
Right. If there's any changes on there, we'll bring them back up and, and make note of those adjustments.
Who made the motion? And is that for, is that September and October's?
Yes. Based on just accept it, only not approve, just accept it.
Now, seconded and sworn.
Okay, then made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. That was Vi, number 24.
Thank you. I'm going.
Thank you.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, receipt, and opening of bids and award of County Route 326 Dry Storito Creek Bridge, finding the project. Mike and David.
Somebody has a mic? I don't think I always have a mic.
It's on the bridge?
How wide is that bridge right now?
Eighteen, nineteen.
How wide?
Nineteen.
It's gonna make it thirty feet or?
The first bid that we, the first bid that we opened up is from Liska Construction Company Y'all are gonna need time to review, gentlemen. Second bid, we only have two. Second bid we opened up, it's from Four Moors Paybin Incorporated. I want you all to have time to review, ten, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. Y'all wanna look at the page before they take it? Let's go ahead. One of them. On item number nine, the gentleman are gonna step up for a minute to review. Is Herb here?
Yeah.
Herb?
Judge, you can accept this resignation, disacknowledge it, is all you need to do. You can go forward.
Okay, with item number eight, so do we, do we have to make a vote on it, or just acknowledging?
Just acknowledge, that's all.
That's it. Yeah.
You ready?
Just making sure we do everything right here before we appoint another. All right, thank you, Herb, very much. Okay, with the resignation of Richard Butler, we don't need a court to vote on it, so we're gonna go ahead and go moving back to item number eight. Discuss, act on appointment of county judge to serve through December 31, 2014, authored by Commissioner's Court. Guys, well, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what I believe. I believe that we should go ahead and appoint Walter R. Long, Jr., since he was already voted in, and he's gonna take, take it up in January anyways. We can go ahead and have him as an interim until, until the regular.
Hold your second.
Wait. Let me, Maurice is saying something, go ahead.
See, what you have to do is that you can recognize that he's going to be county judge. It's obviously just a forebund conclusion, but I think you're gonna be required for when he has to be sworn in before he can. He's an intervinous, we've got a sworn in.
No, we can, we're gonna, we're just gonna, we're gonna appoint him right now, but he'll get sworn in tomorrow sometime. But he's not gonna take over until he gets sworn in. We're just appointing the, we're just appointing Walter R. Long, Jr., but when he gets sworn in, he'll be the county judge. As of, from now to then, I'll be taking care of him. I guess, uh... That'll be your motion. I guess, I wasn't, I'll let y'all make the motion. Go ahead, y'all make the motion. That was just my opinion on it. What do y'all say?
I agree. Pete?
Yeah.
Oh, you made.
I make the motion to appoint Walter Long to be county judge until December 31st this year.
Enter.
Enter.
Like, that's what he would, Herb? But it would be there. Because it's not until the end of it.
He'd finish the term.
Right.
So that Walter R. Long, Jr.
He'd start at.
It's an expedition.
I second.
Okay, it's been made and seconded to appoint Walter R. Long, Jr. as county judge interim until the end of this year until he takes his regular four-year term. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Walter? You wanna say hi? That's Walter R. Long, Jr. right there.
I'm going to be sworn in, assuming that y'all nominated me tomorrow morning at, I think, 8:30 by Judge Ray in the courtroom.
Okay, do you wanna step up here and say anything, or you're there?
No, I'll say something thereafter my point.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, we're waiting on number nine, right? Yeah. Okay, we're gonna, since we're waiting on number nine, we're gonna go ahead and move to number 10. Discuss, approve, disapprove, to authorize architect to issue documents for bidding for the EMS facility, 1301, authored by Ray, David.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We have, we're in our final redline stages for the EMS facility. We added the third bay as previously instructed, and added space for the JP offices as previously instructed, and we're ready now. I would like to issue those documents out for bidding on November 23rd and receive those, we'll receive those proposals on December 23rd in accordance with the presentation that Mr. Jeff Chapman did with you last court.
And the documents, the bidding to, people will be able to review the documents or the bidders and how they...
Yes. The, well, what we do is the invitation to bid that we email out to all of the different plan rooms, and a copy also will be here at the judge's office. And in that, it gives everybody instructions on how they access those documents. We, we provide the documents in multiple ways. One is, we have an FTP site, that's a secure FTP site. Anybody that wants to see the documents can get a username and password from our office and access the documents online. And then we also issue them out, print them, and issue them out to the plan rooms. And then if people want to have a hard copy of them, they give us a deposit, and they get a copy of them, and then when they return the, when they return the plans and they're usable for Karnes County to be able to use them for construction, their deposit is returned. So we will be sending the invitation out to the plan rooms after you authorize us to do this today, so that contractors are aware that they will be, the documents will be ready on November 23rd, and they can start with the procedure of getting a copy of the documents. We'll send a copy of that to the judge's office also.
The plans, where's the, please?
Yes, sir. We are finishing our final redlines today. We need Jeff Chapman to review the upfront documents like he did on the jail, and we'll, we need his comments back from him, but on November 23rd, we'll be putting the documents out.
I make motion approve. Agenda item number 10 presented. I second it.
Okay, you're gonna make it a second. All in favor, say aye. Darrell?
I just want to know, where's the location of the rate figure?
Well, the plans, we will...
Where's the one?
They'll be in all the plan rooms, and then if you want a copy of them, there'll be a copy here at the judge's office, and if you want to get a copy, you can have access to the FTP site by contacting us. So if you give me your information, I can email you the invitation, and then that will give you all the information that you need, okay?
Before we finish this, I want to hear from Walter.
I just wanna ask y'all to please ask whoever's speaking to you with their back to the audience to pick up the microphone and use it so that everybody can hear good.
Okay, our apologies.
We play a lot enough, bless.
Is the microphone, it's on?
Testing.
All right, thank you, sir.
And speak into it.
Okay, we have on the table a motion and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Moving along to item number 11. Discuss, approve, disapprove, to authorize architects to issue documents for bidding for the Karnes County Courthouse roof project, 1405, authored by Ray, David.
So we also are completing the final redlines for the Courthouse roof project. We took that project over because Granblum had personal issues that he was not able to complete as the architect. He's still acting as the historical consultant to us, and we are ready also to put those documents out for bidding. We would like to, they will be issued out on November the 19th pending approval by court today, and receiving bids on December, or proposals on December the 18th.
Um... Pete?
Yeah, we're ready to move on on this target. I would, I would approve the authorization of the downtown Courthouse roof project.
Second. Item number none, been made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes.
And they'll be accessed at the same one?
Yes, sir.
Item number 12. Discuss, discuss update with Commissioner's Court on the progress of the jail project. Elaine?
We are, we have been working diligently with the contractor to complete the jail project. As you were aware, we, the Commissioner's Court, when the pier incidents occurred, gave HMC some additional time for substantial completion, and that substantial completion date has been December the 6th of this year. And as we near it, and over the last thirty to forty-five days, it's become apparent that we're not gonna make the December 6th date. HMC has made diligent efforts to provide additional subcontractors and forces out on the project in order to expedite the project as, as much as they possibly can. We are not sacrificing quality of, of construction for time, though. We're making sure that everything is done, inspected, and reviewed prior to covering it up. And HMC now has an updated accelerated schedule for us that they have put together that shows our substantial completion. Instead of December the 6th, it shows our substantial completion on January the 18th. And Donnie Kramer is here from HMC. He is the project manager for HMC, and I asked him to be here so that he can talk to you and answer any questions related to the schedule. But it does appear that January the 18th is going to be the date for substantial completion on the project in lieu of December the 6th. HMC does understand that there are liquidated damages in the contract, and they understand that the county intends to impose those, and those letters have gone out, and they've acknowledged that they understand that.
So, what is the reason for the delay now? Other than, I know, understanding tone about the subcontract?
Yes.
Do we still have the windows?
We do not have windows and probably Donnie would better be able to address specific questions, but there are a number of critical path items that we do not have in yet. And as much as everything's pushing some of those critical path items, even if everything was finished, there are some items that if they're critical path, they're not there, we can't open. So, let me let Donnie go ahead and answer more specific and detailed questions related to the schedule because the contractor does drive the schedule.
Morning.
Good morning, your full name?
My name's Donnie Kramer.
Donnie Kramer.
I'm the acting project manager for the Karnes County Jail project for HMC, what's this? Uh, the schedule was, it will be issued as of today. I have a half a dozen copies here to give to the court. Substantial completion will include all inspections. That is the date that all inspections will be completed, uh, that are needed for the jail to open. I understand that they, I've talked to Commissioner Gower multiple times about, uh, training and FNFNE of the county. That day, uh, we're bringing in the start of training around the 1st of January. We can work with the county multiple ways to get them in maybe earlier, sooner, just depending on the situation and where the project stands. I'm not sure 100% what all training is gonna be needed. So, uh, I'll get a better grasp on that, I'll be able to help out a little more.
What seems to be the, the delay, why is it delayed not being able to be finished by the 21st of December like first plan?
Uh, the 1st of December?
Yeah, well, it was like 21st or 6th.
The 6th, December 6th, yes. Uh, now, right now, the main issue is concrete, ready mix and aluminum storefronts. The manufacturing, we're just, we're, we're held to the fire on it, at least. It's 46 weeks for manufacturing and it's another 46 weeks for install. I mean, it's, there's nothing I can do about it, really. Uh, concrete ready mix, uh, the economy down here, we, uh, we got blindsided by, I mean, we're at their mercy.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Acme Concrete, like she said, we're not jeopardizing quality, so we're going with the best, Acme Concrete in this area. And they're only giving it to us when they want to. Uh, they've actually taken us off the books. Uh, those dates are up on the top of the schedule, uh, when we're pouring all the flatwork. And to be honest with you, there's just, there's nothing, I can't make them give me concrete. And they like the old field better and they like the structure.
Basically, that's what it is, the concrete?
Yes, sir.
The concrete?
The building shell wise, the only thing that's hindering the schedule is the manufacturing of the aluminum storefronts. And I'm, I'm working diligently to try to expedite that. I've actually looked into going back to the original coner system and bringing in another subcontractor. Okay, so.
So, is the subcontractor that was gonna install the building? Cause I know everything's on the blueprint, those could've been ordered within enough time for them to be here when y'all put the shell together, so that's not ready to be there, is it the subcontractor?
Yes, the subcontractor was the initial delay. I'm still having issues with the subcontractor.
Pete?
I know, I check with every day down there, I call some, yes, he calls, he's checking. So, he is, he has been calling, he's running through the new updates. And of course, at this time, at this time of the year, it's, it's harder to, uh, get anything speeding up. So, they won't, the manufacturers won't get many promises either. He has checked with, I think it's three different, uh, subcontractors who might, who might change you, I know he changed with you. They already changed the air conditioning subcontractor, I mean, just to, uh, expedite it and it costs $700,000 to change contractors. They have been trying.
264, actually.
264, yes.
Now, I am new to this project, I'm only, I've been here now seven and a half weeks. Uh, we brought on a new superintendent, uh, we have an assistant superintendent, like, we have a full 18 now. Um, the economy did drive a little bit of a delay with superintendent wise. Houston's a nasty market right now and people are getting stolen left and right. Uh, that's why I'm here today, to look y'all in the eyes and tell you that I'm here to the end, at least to the end of this project. I can't guarantee you my future with HMC, but I can tell you I'll be getting in good progress.
That sounds great, and just keep doing a good job and make sure these, none of these subcontractors are rushing through the job cause you know, when you rush a job and try to say pen, you're gonna do poor quality work.
Yes, sir.
Do you foresee the other, I mean, you got, I always play the what if, but what if you add some more? In what, I mean, I guess I'm asking you, any other areas within your schedule that you would think that could be, that could throw you back even further?
Oh, uh, like holes? Um, no, just weather wise, weather is always an issue, especially when you're doing, uh, civil works. Can't pour on a wet surface. I mean, the weather is gonna be a major, major factor.
So, the biggest percent of the delays into the concrete?
Right now, yes, sir.
So, what would be the next delay, you think?
The only delay would be the aluminum storefront. We're moving on the interior, I'm actually looking at other options of boarding the facility up, uh, to complete the finishes on the inside of the building. Prior to the aluminum storefront being installed, that's all the aluminum exterior windows, uh, not just the front doors, so don't think that. Um, I'll board it up so we can condition the space, finish it out, paint it. I don't know if the city's willing to work, that's why that date of training can be moved up or down. City and.
The county, county.
Well, they're gonna give us the, uh, the occupancy.
Right, okay.
So, if the city's allowing us to bring in the county to start training early without a occupancy permit, then that can be moved up a little bit. You know, with boarded up storefronts, I mean, and can hear the space.
We can do a, um, a partial substantial completion to help accommodate the, we can do a partial substantial completion to help accommodate training. So, in other words, if they're still working on something, but the facility is acceptable to the sheriff to be able to start his training, um, to help expedite their actual takeover of the facility, we can do a partial substantial completion to comply with the requirements that the city should have in order to do that. So, HMC is willing to work outside the box and do everything that we can. Um, DSA is willing to do the same to try to accommodate getting the sheriff in because there was a time period built in for them to do their training, um, after substantial completion. So, if we can, uh, overlap some of that training with the completion of the project, it'll be less stays overall that we lose and we're working on that.
Okay, Maurice, Doris, did you have a comment?
I'd like to know if the, uh, when you turn the keys over to the sheriff, where are we on the budget, are we gonna be over budget, under budget, on budget? Nobody said anything about the dollars. I'd like to know where we are on the dollars.
Well, you can address your contract.
Well, my contract's a 10-deep contract. The only issue, or the only thing that we have to work with is the contingency and whatever we call it.
Our contingency, we have not spent our contingency yet, there are a few items, there, there are a few items that, um, that are going to come out of that contingency, a fence and, and a couple things, but none of the contingency has been spent, as a matter of fact, the money, the value engineering money that HMC gave to the county that we added to the contingency is still sitting there. So, um, we have the contingency that will be any unused portion of the contingency that will be going back on the overall project budget, we have not spent any of the project contingency, construction materials testing, um, at this time, which is close to being complete. We're still testing concrete, but we still have $25,000 left in that budget and we have, um, $130,000 left in the environmental cleanup budget. So, we are under budget on the overall project budget, both on the jail and the overall project budget for this project.
We'll be issuing a payment, authorized payment today for $696,000 or something like that.
Maurice, go ahead.
Let me explain this, and it's real simple terms for an army infantry officer. Are we, uh, are we gonna be under the $11 million?
Yes, sir, we are going to be under, the total budget that was presented to Commissioners Court is, for the project was $11.382 million and we are going to be under that $11.382 million when we are finished in January.
Guys. I guess that's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be here, I'll be here every, every Commissioners Court.
All right, if you need something from us, just give us a call.
Thank you.
The gentlemen, seeing you walk back in right on item number nine, we're gonna reopen item number nine.
All right, two contractors that bid on this, Liston Construction, foremost, maybe. Uh, everybody made all the criteria and everything, Liston Construction got the job, And foremost, their bid was $649,270.46.
Liston's was 516, 516?
516, 728, 77.
Is that over your estimate?
Yes, it is. The, uh, the original cost of the bridge is about the same. We, we have 275, we increased it to like 300, we're going through things that we added in, uh, such as rounding off around Houston traffic signal, increasing the size of the road we have to approach the bridge on both sides and add in some other ones that we thought for safety reasons we needed to create. So, that's, that's why the prices, I think the prices are.
What was the project, what was your projected cost before any of that?
Uh, well, we were working to a budget, we were working to a budget of $300,000.
$300,000?
For the bridge itself and adding in these other things.
So, the other ones were 260,000?
About 200,000, part of the rest is, yes. All the bad material, uh, that's in the base bid.
1747, yes.
Well, yeah, originally this was gonna come out as rich, but, uh, I don't know, but Mike's talking about going ahead and requesting reimbursement for 1747, which it's fine, it's only kind of a 326, which is in program already.
Mike, is it, is it all good?
Yes, everything is good. So, we recommend, uh, award to Liston Construction, $516,728.77.
At 77 cents?
Yes.
Guys, we need y'all, Herb, y'all, go ahead and motion.
I make motion approve, item number nine.
For that amount?
Yes, sir.
And does Herb have to, Ms. Jeff have to look at that contract, um, before he do his thing?
Herb? No, I think I know, it's fine, they're, they're standard, they're standard contracts, mom.
Make sure Ken, yeah.
I also gave you a couple weeks.
Well, I have a motion on the table, go ahead now.
Second.
It made a second to award to Liston Construction for $516,728.77. And on countable 326, the guy's gonna do a quick bridge line in progress. All in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving along to item number 13. It's a .2920 acre block, five to six blocks, 203 tract, 24-96. I'm not gonna read the rest of that, I guess I can. As per Commissioners' request, Commissioners Court meeting in September 29, had City of Karnes, ISD to execute a letter agreement, authorizing the county to execute a quick claim deed on the surface estate only to the, to the Delasantas and to execute a ratification of oil, gas and mineral lease as individual as a, and as trustee for both entities. Proposed for the County of Karnes individually and as a trustee for the City of Karnes City and for the Karnes City Independent School District to execute a quick claim deed on the above described acreage to Manuel Delasantas and Y, still be at Delasantas and to execute the ratification of OGML, ordered by Alva Jonas and Kent Hacken. Hi, Alva.
Good morning. All right, on these, on lot 5 and 6, lot 203. Okay, we've done a little run-through that, that I just handed to you. Looks so you have a little history on what happened. The, uh, McCulloughs beaded that property to Karnes County back in 1985. And then for some reason, it was put on the sheriff's, uh, sale deal and he sold it to, in 2011, to Helen Von Felk. Well, the county really shouldn't have sold it because it was not a tax sale. But in the meantime, Helen Van Felk sold the surface only to Manuel Delasantas. And when Kent was here in, in September, y'all asked him to, to find out from the city and the school if they agreed to this, to, you know, for the county to handle this. And we did, and I have a copy of the, uh, what the city did sign and the school, that they all agreed. So, the options are that if the county can quitclaim all rights of the surface only to Delasantas and then the county keep the, are they, are, are the county to keep the surface estate? Or the minerals, same thing, if the county can quitclaim mineral interest only, do the City of Karnes City trustee for itself and the Karnes City Independent School District? Or county can keep the mineral interest and then you'll have to go out on bids for a new oil and gas lease?
Okay, so you're saying that the county back in 85, they gave it to the county, right?
It was given to the county, yes. Well, to Karnes County for itself and as trustee for Karnes City Independent School District and the City of Karnes City.
And 2011, those tax sales? And Helen V. Felk?
Purchased those.
Purchased?
Yes.
With mineral rights on?
Yes.
Surface and mineral rights?
Well, no, she only got the surface.
She only got the surface?
If that sheriff's deed, the minerals were retained by Karnes County.
Okay.
Then she sells it in 2013 to Manuel Delasantas and in her deed, she wrote surface only. But you see.
But she didn't have the mineral's key?
And, but then in 14, we have an oil and gas lease from the City of Karnes City trustee for itself and Karnes City Independent School District to Mariposa Oil. Well, that lease is really invalid also as, you know, until we can fit it straight, who, who, who is the real owner of the surface and of the minerals? And so, that's, you know, you have two options like we showed there. Either the county can quitclaim all their interest in the surface to Delasantas or the county can elect to keep the surface and save people the minerals. They can either keep it or quitclaim the minerals to the Card City, to the City of Card City as trustee and then that'll make that lease valid.
Is this property already in the production pool?
Yes.
If we kept the metal, why should we quitclaim the metal?
Well, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to. But if you, if you elect to keep the minerals, then we'll have to take the lease from the county. Cause the city already has the school.
Originally, the county kept, in 2011, the county kept the mineral rights and, and the county had the legal right to do that.
Yes.
So, basically.
Of course, the sheriff's deed was, County of Karnes as trustee. But of course, the sheriff's deed was County of Karnes as trustee for itself and for the City of Karnes and the Karnes Independent School.
So then the Karnes ISD and the city own a part of that too, of course, it's all tax earnings?
Yes.
Okay, but you said something about we could, we keep the surface?
Well, if you keep.
I'm confused, I'm sorry, how would we keep the surface if we saw those, you know?
Well, it was, because it was really an invalid deed because it was land that was not taken by taxes. It was land that was needed to the county. And then in 2011, sheriff sold it as tax property.
All right, my, my opinion on that, guys, if it was the county's mistake, if it was the county's mistake, basically.
Well, I mean, I, you know.
Okay, if it was our mistake and somebody's already purchased it and done stuff to the property and ended or called their own, I personally wouldn't want to take the surface back from them. I mean, I, I feel that would be wrong. But on the mineral rights originally, we kept those in 2011, and I feel that we should just go ahead. Go over that deed.
All right, but are you going to keep it just for the county? I mean, as only, the county only owning the minerals?
Well.
And not as trustee for the city and the school? That's where it all have been. If you're going to, if county.
Originally, we kept them off as just, not as a trustee to them, right?
When we, they were kept, they were kept as from County of Karnes for itself and for the City of Karnes as trustee of the City of Karnes and Karnes ISD.
That was how it originally was done? Well, why would we want, how, how, guys, how would we want to change?
Well, you know, the thing is, you can go ahead and do a quitclaim to the city and the school.
For their portion?
They didn't re-admit them all.
And then the county would, we have to go, we did, we'd go out and bid with their interest.
Or we could just keep it off, is that what you're saying?
Well, that would be, if you keep it, that would be fine, but then, like I say, we'll have to bid for that property with the county.
But the county could keep off. Right, or the county could keep the whole mineral rights.
That's the only way we could keep all mineral rights, we have to re-admit.
So in other words, you're going to quitclaim the surface only to Manuel Delasantos?
Yes, but that's what I would do.
And then the county elects to keep the minerals, and then we'll have to, next meeting, we'll be there to, to, no, we'll, to advertise first. We have to advertise first.
Guys, what do y'all want to do? Do what?
Keep it, have to re-advertise the bids, keep the minerals and quitclaim the surface.
Surface only to Delasantos.
The one that originally has it now?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
I made it.
Okay, sure. Motion's been made a second, and all the papers say aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes.
All right.
That was item number 12.
And let me ask you something, you know, we have.
Sorry, so many questions.
That's, we have the deed, the quitclaim deed, and, of course, I made it out, you know, to Richard Butler to sign it. Do you want me to take it back to the office and change it for you to sign?
No, I can, I can go and sign it and put Judge Protem on it, that's not a problem.
So you want to do it now or?
Yeah, we can do it now, just show them the word sign. Moving to item number 14. .0205 of an acre. What is that, any slash two, north, two of blocks? Okay, north half of blocks, six and, six and seven blocks, 106, tract 184-412. Number one, proposed for the, well, proposed for the Karnes County municipal uses and purposes to either, number one, quitclaim the surface estate and mineral estate to Rogelio Rodriguez and Y. Diana Rodriguez. Two, quitclaim just the surface estate and keep the mineral estate and advertise for bids for oil, gas, and mineral lease. Or three, keep both the surface estate and mineral estate and advertise for bids for oil, gas, and mineral lease, ordered by Alva Jonas and Kent Hacken. Is that exactly the same?
It's not.
Pretty much, okay.
Okay, Mike, we've broken it down there, that goes back to 1891, when the lots were, it was the surface and the minerals. And then in 1896, the sheriff sold, must've been on a tax sale, the county got it. Then, as you see there, then it was a deed done in 44 from Rangel to Tom Smiley, then Tom Smiley to Rodriguez, and then Mr. Rogelio Rodriguez, who now is the owner, and they've been paying taxes on this property all these years. But we need to straighten out the legal part of it. The options are that the county quitclaim all rights, the surface and minerals to the Delasantos, to the Rodriguezs. And then are that the county elects to keep the surface and/or the minerals and then have to advertise for the bids. Or they can go ahead and give the surface only to the Rodriguezs and keep the minerals. Now, we did lease this from the Rodriguezs, but as of now, that lease is moving in valid.
How did we originally, okay, right here in January 3, 1991, when the Rogelio Rodriguez has it right here, it takes the public next to it.
Well, that was an affidavit that's paid the family history of his parents, that Luce and Bella Rodriguez. And see, that's who Tom Smiley had beaded to back in.
To Luce.
Uh-huh. And then, of course, then the Luce, there was never really a deed from Luce to Rogelio. So then, of course, see this, in 1991, that Oscar and that other Elliott's, they beaded all of that to Rogelio Rodriguez, their interest in it. But this one is not, it's never been a real legal deed from the county to the pres owners, who is Rogelio Rodriguez.
Rogelio Rodriguez has been, has owned this since 1991?
Yes.
So he got 23 years of ownership, paying taxes, bringing it up, doing everything. And in his mind, he always figured he owned mineral rights, he owned surface and all.
Everything, yes.
And y'all, y'all.
We just need, he quitclaiming from the county all their right or interest in that property to Rogelio and Doctor Rodriguez.
Yeah, well, guys, my opinion on this is that if any other time, we probably, I would have, well, I, I think we would have given them the mineral rights and the surface rights.
Back at that time.
Yeah, back at that time. And we wouldn't have kept the mineral rights back at that time, so I don't see why I wouldn't keep their mineral rights after they've been paying for 23 years. We wouldn't have done it back in 91.
Back to motion?
Well, no, I let y'all make the motions and everything, but y'all, that's what, my opinion on this. I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep the surface right nor would I keep the mineral rights.
You want to do that, in other words, what you're saying is that number one on there, quitclaim surface and minerals.
That's what I would have given, all of them, because in 91, we would have, we would have done that.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, number one there.
It's been made a second, and all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes.
All right, we thank you, and, uh.
Thank you so much, Alva.
We'll be back the next week and get it on the agenda to lease that north one half of lot five and six and lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to item number 15. There's 15 through 23 are Shelby's. What do you want to do? You want to read through it? You want to pass on?
I'm reading.
Okay, we're going to pass on item number 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, but we're going to stay on number 18. Discuss, approve, disapprove, update on TCQ, propose air monitor to replace in parking lot east of the Karnes County Jail. Shelby?
Uh, when we.
Should that be west of the Karnes County?
Yeah.
West of the Karnes County.
We, uh, we, TCQ was here, we talked about putting the air monitor by the closest to the point of the jail, and we talked with the historical commission. Historical commission said that they would rather us move because they want that thing to be taken into a picture. Somebody could put you in the courthouse, it'd be, wouldn't do their standards, they wanted it moved. So I've got a map of the proposed site, number two is where in the, uh.
They want it to put there first?
Yes, well, yeah. So they'll just let me on over the side of the.
They want to move down there by the existing parking lot, is that correct?
Correct.
They want to move it here.
On the old parking lot, but it'd be further down, we can come over there again.
Basically by this little storage building?
Yeah.
Lock off the handicap places up there?
No.
It won't take up anything? Basically, it's moving from the top east corner to the top west corner.
So, y'all can see it or not, but this was the proposed site, and we'll just move it down here. This is, this is the annex here, and then this, that storage building, it's in the parking lot, and we put it right in there.
And it's not going to affect any of the parking area, right? And that's just discussion, that's just discussion, doesn't have to be approved, right?
No, we approved the placement already on the parking.
Just more information on this.
Before we go to item number 26, payment of bills, we have a 2014 home care and hospice month proclamation that I would like to read. Where, somebody here from there? Y'all understand that? Thank you for being here. I'm going to read it to the best of my ability here. Whereas, home care services provide, listen, y'all want to read it?
I can.
Yeah.
2014 Home Care and Hospice Month Proclamation. Whereas, home care services provide high-quality and compassionate health care services to those in need, especially at times of community or personal health crisis care. And whereas, home care is the most preferred method of health care delivery among disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live independently in their own homes as long as they possibly can. And whereas, home care in Texas is a growing alternative to hospitalization or other institution-based forms of health care for acute and chronic illnesses, providing care to hundreds of thousands of Texans each year. And whereas, hospice care provides humane and comfortable support for terminally ill patients and their families, including pain control, palliative medical care, and social, emotional, and spiritual services. And whereas, hospice fulfills basic human needs of feeling comfortable in familiar surroundings and of attending physical and emotional peace during the last stage of life. And whereas, there's a need to increase public discussion among about advances in pain control and the care options available to individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds who are at the end of life. And whereas, the Texas Association for Home Care and Hospice and home care and hospice providers in Texas have declared November 2014 as Home Care and Hospice Month, with the theme of bringing health care home, and are calling on all Texans to observe this occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now, therefore, we, the Karnes County Commissioners' Court, do hereby proclaim November 2014 as Home Care and Hospice Month, and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about the home care and hospice philosophy of care for the elderly, disabled, and terminally ill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to item number 26, payment.
Didn't we do the 24 tax collect?
Yes, we did that one at the beginning.
No.
Treasures, I am sorry, I am sorry. Okay, 24, I am so sorry. I remember I said that was item number 24, I corrected myself there.
That's good, leave.
Yeah, no. I'm sorry, folks.
Okay. Tricycle actions for the month of October, which the month to date here today will be the same as all this previous numbers one time, if that's okay, please.
Sure.
For the County of Karnes MNO, the month of October, 522,258.90. It's collection rate of 2.81%. That was on the current collections. On the delinquent collections for the month of October, 14,992.04, for a collection rate of 6.08%. For the INS for the month of October, 46,215.70, for a collection rate of 2.64%. Delinquent INS for the month of October, 1,794.38, for a collection rate of 7.58%. Roden Bridge for the month of October, 77,208.21, for a collection rate of 2.64%. Delinquent Roden Bridge for the month of October, 3,296.89, for a collection rate of 7.5%. Rural Fire, current collections, 26,296.61, for a collection rate of 2.65%. Delinquent Roden Bridge for the month of October, 1,632.85, for a collection rate of 7.53%.
Does the seat terrace don't another account?
Well, is it, is it going to have to be a separate bank account, isn't it, Rwanda or?
My understanding, it can be in the same bank account, it just has to be a separate fund within that bank account.
And we're still, still waiting on PNA to create that report for us so we know how much to be.
PNA could use that.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 26, payment of bills.
Okay, items of interest in this bill cycle, if you'll turn to page three. The very bottom entry is a payment to Hale Mills on the current costs of the jail, 651,613.55. You go to page eight, that's in Roden Bridge expenditures. The total amount in road materials in this particular bill cycle is 452,996.55. Of that, approximately 89,000 is specifically for County Road 388. All other payments this cycle are of the norm. The total for this bill cycle is one million, two hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Guys, have y'all had time to look it over? I don't know if y'all have looked it over. Tell me.
On page, on page seven. We have thirty-eight hundred dollars engineering activity aside, what is that?
This has to do with floodplain, and we recover those fees from the applicants for the emergency floodplain condition.
Then we recover them from all the people that they've passed. Motion made, seconded or in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion passes, that was item number twenty-six. Thank you, ma'am. Item number twenty-seven, report of fees, fines, monies collected by the Department of the Police, County Clerk? Nothing. Okay. District Clerk?
She put it on there.
Grand total was twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Last checks dispersed was eight, negative eight thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dash fifty. What's fifty, total per month is seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. County Attorney?
She left that up here. For the month of October and restitution, she collected one thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, and court costs and fines, two hundred and forty dollars, whatever that total is. So, month-to-date, I mean, year-to-date, for this year, she's collected a total of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you. Justices on the piece.
Precinct One, JP Precinct One, uh, tell number cases filed was three hundred and one. Total retained by the county, forty-one thousand, five, three hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Remitted to the state, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Total revenue collected was sixty thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. Precinct Two, uh, total cases filed, uh, ninety-nine. Uh, kept by the county, twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, remitted to the state, eight thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Total, twenty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents. Precinct Three, number cases filed, one eighty-one. Total retained by the county, twenty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Remitted to the state, nine thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-three cents, for a total revenue collected of thirty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Priest Commissioner, I mean, JP Four, total cases filed was a hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, kept by the county, fourteen thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Remitted to, to the state, six thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and five cents. Total, twenty thousand, nine forty-six and eighty-three cents. That's all for the JP.
Thank you, ma'am. Juvenile Department? Do you have anything here, passing for the Juvenile? Special Projects?
For the termination permits, I have fifty-four, for a total of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. Uh, the engineer's fees were three thousand, four hundred. The county portion is two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. On our subject permits, I have ten permits for a total of four thousand, one hundred. Uh, one thousand, five hundred and twenty is for the inspector. A hundred dollars for TCQ, and the county portion is two thousand, four hundred and eight.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff Department?
Good morning. Uh, for the Karnes County Sheriff's Office, the October 2014 reports is as follows. Assaults, we had ten. Burglaries, we had eight. Criminal mischief, we had five. Criminal trespass, we had two. Disturbances, we had twenty-two. EMS was a hundred and forty. Fire, sixteen. Exports, twenty-three. Loot livestock, twenty-five. Prisoner transports, ninety-seven. Requested speaks and officers, one eighty-one. Road hazards, twenty-nine. Suspicious activity, seventeen. Suspicious subjects' vehicles, forty-two. Uh, thefts, or eleven. Warrant services, nineteen. Welfare checks, twenty-four. Arrests, a hundred fifty-seven. Warnings was four hundred and eleven. Citations was three hundred and thirty-five. Traffic stops were a thousand and thirty. Accidents were one forty-eight. Uh, the inmate, inmate population is anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-two, thirty-seven per month. Uh, this morning, we have thirty-one. Yes, sir.
You got additional six deputies, one of those deputies was supposed to be a prison motor vehicle deputy?
Yes, sir.
Where are we on the C O D?
We're, we're using them now, we now have our, our traffic units working out there.
He has to do a second week, Mr. Yoder, uh, he'll go to second week of training, uh, according this coming week, the seventeenth. Once he completes that, he should be up and running.
I guess that the loot livestock's gone down, don't you think?
Sorry, your G O's increased a lot, start, I guess you must have had some good activity going from seventeen to twenty-four, you went from eighteen to G O's, twenty-three to twenty-five.
We've also had an increase as far as female transports.
Thank y'all, we really appreciate what y'all have.
Thank y'all very much.
EMS Department?
Okay, EMS report for, um, the month of October. Had a hundred and forty-one dispatch requests. Total to a hundred and fifty patients. Um, transported ninety-eight patients, thirty-eight refusals, eleven canceled calls, six calls that involved multi, multi-patients. Um, three air evacuations, four out-of-county transports, and no fire hazmat standbys for the month. Um, year-to-date calls, uh, thirteen hundred and forty, uh, adds up, that was adds up ten thirty-one. Um, collections, uh, Medicare total was seventeen thousand, one hundred sixty-two eighty-five. Other insurance is fourteen thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars, fifty-eight cents, for a total of thirty-one thousand, seven nineteen forty-three. And, uh, that'd be year-to-date through thirty-one October, uh, three hundred forty thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The, uh, the other sheet of paper that Casey passed out to you, uh, Shelby had asked us a couple of months ago to, uh, if we kind of had this in a, in a graph form of the difference of call volume, kind of pre-equal for activity. Uh, broke it down, uh, in 2010, there was seven hundred and twenty-two dispatch requests. Um, year-to-date, as of today, uh, we've done thirteen hundred and eighty-two calls for the year. Uh, which is a ninety-one percent increase over the past, not even solid four years yet.
You probably need to say a hundred percent over a year.
Yes, we, we think so. We're, we're averaging four point three to five calls a day. Um, and, and we're actually getting into the busiest time of our year, so. And, and we broke this down into medical patients, uh, of course, our, our medical patients are always a lot higher than our trauma patients. Um, and then, uh, the, the graph charts broke it down by year, and then, uh, we, uh, we broke it down by month. Uh, on the second page, uh, we broke it down, uh, for the years by month. Uh, so you can kind of get a, you can kind of get an idea of, of where we're at.
On the trauma patients, you're probably at a hundred percent by the end of the year too, over 2010?
I, I'm pretty sure.
And one of the reasons that I asked him to do that is that there's going to be an upcoming legislature, you're going to start seeing a push by, by counties to, within equal for, to try to assess the information they have pre-equal for time to now to see how it's affected the cost of county government to operate. And with that, there's, they're going to try to see if they can get the counties to get some type of reimbursement for doing help with work. It'll probably take the two legislatures to do it, but it's something that's in the works right now.
Mr. Kelly, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you, how are you about trying to force people out of the county, I mean, I don't quite understand that.
Okay. I'll, I'll, this is the best I can explain it. Our guidelines are set forth by the state of Texas, what we have to do. If we have a patient who we deem, or is, we'll just use trauma, because that's usually easier. Other night, we had a pediatric, uh, believe ten-year-old that had swallowed a quarter. It was stuck in her esophagus. And she was able to breathe, but they, they don't have pediatrics out here at Auto Kaiser. Yes, I mean, cold, flu, that kind of stuff, yes, but that required a pediatric specialist, E N T. Uh, so, therefore, you know, we called Auto Kaiser, said, here's what we got, do you guys want it or not? They're like, no, take it straight to San Antonio, so, so we do that. And it, and we don't, we don't do a lot. Other night, case in point, we had a wreck, there were six patients, one was dead on scene. All five had to be transported, it's raining, we have no support. Um, so, we actually took two of those guys in, kind of leapfrogged them into San Antonio, and they were there in bad shape. You know, we're, we're in the business of saving lives. I mean, we're not, we're not hauling anybody to the doc, to a doctor's appointment, bringing them back. What we're taking is real world, pretty bad stuff, so. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, one time, my husband had real bad things in his stomach, and y'all had to take him to Victoria.
Yes.
You mean, have a major operation.
Yes.
So, he, another out-of-county.
Yeah, and they happen, and, and they're, and, and this is, this has become an issue, not just for us, but across the board in EMS and outlying counties and cities. You know, Hondo, Medina County, Pierceville, they all go through this same thing because there's not an enormous amount of private ambulance services that we used to have to call, to meet us on scene, meet us en route, uh, turn these patients over to get sent. Uh, so, we're, we're doing a lot right now to, to make sure, I mean, we're not at any time leaving the county uncovered. Um, so, so, you know, that's our, I mean, our, our people here are our main concern, but, you know, anybody that's in this county at the time to get, gets hurt, you know, we're going to do the best that we can for them.
Didn't she have a bypass protocol?
Yes, and we do have a bypass protocol, uh, which is required by the state, uh, for everyone to have one, that, uh, it, it goes by trauma criteria, and I could go through the chart, and we'd be here all afternoon, but, um, but we do have a bypass protocol in place. There it goes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Elections office?
First of all, we're going to pretend like we're back on, are already on the item twenty-eight, because I don't have to report these or fines, just to report from our department. Um, I just wanted to, um, let you guys know that the, uh, election went off very, very well. We only had a few small issues, um, and I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what's, what happened. At Kennedy City Hall, um, we got some complaints about, um, some of the, they've got so much oilfield worker training going on there, and so, there were some concerns about the people blocking the voting area and that type of thing. We've talked to the city staff, and we've, you know, even our, even our elections workers to try to get that fixed. And it may just be that we have to look for another building if that's going to continue. So, just know that I'm aware of that. And then the other is the Karnes City Hall, and what happened there, um, we had a new election judge that worked there, and, um, I think there were assumptions between the city and some assumptions between the election judge, and, I mean, I obviously failed, because I didn't know what the procedure was there. Normally, we just give it to our judges, they contact the air, and the persons, and that's how it's all worked out. So, I didn't know how it was worked out. Well, anyway, there was a miscommunication. The city says they told our election judge that she needed to come get the key. The election judge does not remember ever hearing that. And so, the city didn't know they needed to be there early, um, they, you know, between the number of state workers, somebody thought that she had picked up the key, and she had, and so, I truly apologize for that, and it will never happen again, because now I know the procedure as well, and I'll know to double-check that. Um, I also wanted to let y'all know that we got lots and lots of compliments. I did go ahead and get the flutter flags out at all of the precincts, um, and they said, vote here. And it just, it looked so nice and so professional, and everybody was really complimentary of those. Um, I think it, you know, it just kind of brings us up a notch, and, and also, um, it, you know, there were some voters who drove by, and I know I used to do that, but remember to vote that day, because they, they, you know, you get in a rush, you know you need to vote, but you get in a rush, and if you see something like that, it catches your attention. And I think any, anything that we can do to get people out and voting is well worth the cost. Um, we still continue to have complaints about the early voting room and the actual non-room, that, that we don't have, people complain often, number one, about the location of it. Um, it's very far to get to, even if you park in handicap parking. And some of the other, we will do curbside voting, but they insist, they want to come in, and they should be able to do that. But it's a struggle for them, so I just want to keep you guys informed. So, I just wanna keep you guys informed of that. Still hoping, I've mentioned before, and I'm still hoping that if, uh, the DPS office does get moved, that would be the perfect place to move us. We would be wonderfully accessible to our voters, and I think voter accessibility is the most important, uh, issue there. So, I just wanna keep you up to date on that. Um, and, uh, we, I am wanting to work now towards, uh, looking at county-wide voting. It's a new trend, just a few years old, um, and several counties have done that, and I really, I've talked to a few of you guys about it. I've also talked to some of our voters about it to see. Um, but what that would do is any voter, anywhere in the county, could go to any of the places that we have open and vote. They would not have to know where they go vote that day. And so, um, let's just say, for example, wonderful place, you know, for us to have one of those is obviously somewhere in Fall City, which the diner seems to be working out well. Um, they would be able to stop on their way home from San Antonio or their way into San Antonio and just vote. They don't have to worry about going, you know, a few miles over here or there. And, uh, and so, uh, anyway, I'm really looking into that, and I'll be giving you more information about what we need, need to get that and, you know, asking, formally asking your opinion and, and those types of things on that. Um, and then, the last thing I wanna do is just take this opportunity to publicly thank the sheriff's department and all of the, the assistance that they give us on Election Day. You know, it's kinda behind the scenes, but there's, there's so much on Election Day. We have to make sure that, about the electioneering and all, and any problems we have, we don't, there's no issues. We just ask, and they're there, and they understand, and they usually come to me a day or two before to make sure. And then they have their guys there with us in the evening to unload, uh, with our judges and, uh, and get all the equipment brought in and everything like that. And that support, for me, is just, uh, amazing, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank them as well as all of our election workers. Got any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving to item number twenty-eight, report from road and bridge department.
All right, we're, uh...
Take up the microphone, Mike.
We're finishing up right now on County Road three twenty-six. Uh, we're high blade digging it all ready. We've got contractors ready, getting ready to come in here and shoot some of that dust suppressant on it. County Road two eleven, we're placing base on it, for one, to improve the ride, and for two, to get it ready so we can submit it out to bids for a contractor. That's a seven-mile road, so it's gonna be a pricey one. We might do that one in sections instead of doing the whole seven mile. Do half of it in one year, and the other half in a week. Depends on how the budget. Uh, three forty-five, we're in the process of doing that one right now. That's the alternate route, place one eighty-one, it's ever closed. We're in the process of getting that cement stabilized, the bases ready down, everything going. Two sixty-nine, hopefully after January, we're gonna take off on two sixty-nine and start laying base all the way around two seventy-seven. They say that's about a fourteen-mile road, so it's gonna be a start-to-stop place where our money's starting to stop. Uh, I got roadside ink, the brush brand, but today's too windy. Looks like all week's gonna be windy, so they won't be on that one. And we are running seven blades right now, and they're trying to handle all the complaints that we've been getting because of the rain.
You're spraying brush?
Yeah. What it is, is it's a weak hill that whatever it contacts hanging over, it just kills what it contacts, doesn't it?
It's getting too cold for that now.
Yeah.
If it's under seventy degrees, if it's not over seventy degrees within six hours of the day, it won't be able to do it. Be wasting money.
Well, this, this guy here, I've talked to him, and I'm, we're in the process of looking at what he's gonna spray with.
And number two on County Road three twenty-six, uh, since we did hire contractors, I know we did, you're gonna have to be more in charge of that.
We are in charge, and we just can't operate the blade for him. That's the thing.
You need to get on to him, and that's your job.
We did. We got all of them, and that's why...
I'll tell you what, that, that's, that's piss poor, right?
That's part of contractor, they get hired, Joe lost his...
You farm, too?
Yeah, well, we did. They're not on anymore. I got Albert out there.
Thank you.
But, you know, that's, that's part of contractor.
I hate to see my money go to waste.
Well, that's part of contractor, you know. I tried getting hands, and they said, "No." So, we contracted out.
Well, I don't think you're gonna get any slack hands with what that contractor got.
It's what I told the contractor, "I'm not here to train your people or use our roads as execution."
That's right.
I need somebody experienced on it that can get the job done, and, you know, I don't know until they get out.
That's what happens sometimes when we take the low bid and the contract, yes, sir.
You don't always give what you want.
That's right, yes, sir.
You know, Mike, uh, I, I still think that, that, uh, part of everything that we're doing, we need to be able to maintain our traffic. And you've been, I know, like on two oh-six and three eighty-eight and two twenty and three forty-five, you've done mixed the concrete into, uh, the dry cement. But my concern is that we need to let the people know on these roads, well, the ones that live on these roads, what we're doing, when we're gonna do it, and somehow need to come up with alternate routes for people to take because to incorporate that dry cement in that material, some people drive one of those. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be a, an issue because somebody's gonna end up, or they're driving in a ditch or something. That's gonna be a problem.
Well, our hardest part is we don't have flag. By the time we put everybody on the rollers, that's three rollers, the blades, and then we're still running all these other blades. You know, we're short-handed, but we do what we can and use flag for us. You know exactly what we're up against.
I guess what I'm saying is, though, I still believe that maybe we should just do a half a road at a time where we maintain good traffic through, and then, and then come back to the other half after you finish the other one side.
Well, the only bad thing, when you do it in Portland, when you run all your cracks in it, you don't do it complete, then you're gonna end up starting out, you're gonna end up cracking what's already cured, and that's gonna incorporate more problems than you got facing.
And you're gonna have to, you have to close that off, too.
But that's what we've been doing, we've been closing the road, but as you can tell, the last time, they still pass those signs and come on through them. All you do is turn them around, and you're like, "Hey, there's a sign."
Mike, I did tell you I had such a call from people in Fall City, especially about County Road two eleven and school superintendent calling, "Oh, no, this condition, this road, is there any activity in this road? This school was wrapped, but he wants to get over there."
No, and no, it's not disrupting, no traffic, no nothing. What we're doing is we're laying the material on the side and laying it across, and when I can get traffic control out there, he's out there, and he's kinda guiding them through, plus my ticket man is helping, too.
Unless you're changing, we're doing a cove.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, if you're doing a cove, that's totally different, all the, we close the road. But right now, we're leaving all the traffic that's still passing through, everything's all screwed.
You're gonna dump that all the way to the, to the port?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna take the whole seven miles on that.
I drove yesterday.
Bad. A lot of the ports are sinking because they got that pit run in there, and, you know, that's all gotta come back after the fact. But we're trying to put, what we're gonna do is we're gonna lay all the base down and improve the ride, and then we're gonna get a contractor out there. Being that we laid this base down, I'm praying that we can get our number about two hundred and fifty thousand a mile or so, but even if you put those numbers together, it's still gonna be over millions in seven miles. And I gotta watch my numbers because I gotta stop at one point because I gotta keep maintenance money to keep it through the end of the year, too, so. As you can see, the bridge.
Yeah, but you gotta really pay attention to seventeen forty-seven, three roads, if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, see, I kept putting the material on those roads because they're ready to get ready to run. Let's see, next year, if you're gonna start. And I'm trying to concentrate, starting them a month at a time. That way, I have all three of those roads going at one time, and you're beginning to balance them, thus.
Mr. Yoder, you have a question?
Still think it'd be a good idea if the road and bridge could bring up a report, everybody, on how many, this is where I'm ending November in this, in this little year, how many roads they paved that month, and the people that don't, at the end of the year, that you said you're gonna pave thirty-five miles a road. Right now, I don't know where one mile is. I think people... Hold on a second, let me fix. I mean, people in the state, especially that live out of the country, have, have, have a right to know how much you're doing, how much you're gonna do, and how much you've done. And they need to go through that every month.
Like I said, it's wrong weather to be paving, and the contractors all waiting to go. We've been waiting.
And, uh, you still file a report? I don't care what the weather is. People out here in the country, I live in the country, I live down a mile of bad road, and there's lots of other people. But they, there's no hope in the country that these people are ever gonna see a road. I mean, they've been listening to this stuff for, I've been here for a very short period of time. They've been hearing this, some type of gossip, and it hasn't gotten any better.
Mike, you're gonna have to, one thing we have to do is, uh, they even just voted and scheduled how you're gonna do the, break out of that nineteen million and stuff, you know, whatever, materials, whatever you need.
What I have is I got the silk coat roads, but the thing is, are we gonna put it on the internet? Because there, that's the only way they're gonna get it unless I bring a whole stack of papers here where they can grab and pick and choose the road.
Well, we need to be more...
You wanna do it that way?
Yeah, but what I'm saying, but you need to be creating your schedule, uh, of the money, how you gonna, how you lay it out, and how you plan to do, what, when.
Because I had a layout that I gave you last...
Yeah, but I think they need you more of a detailed, detailed...
Yeah, on what roads? Well, I, I had the silk coat on there, and I got two silk coats running this year because I carried a million dollars over from last year because things just didn't get signed and everything. So, this year, they're supposed to start it in the winter, but the weather's not cooperating. Okay, that's twenty-five miles. Thirty-three point four miles of new road is hopefully gonna start in May. They're gonna hit it on time. So, that's what I'm working on right now, getting that seal code to make. And the roads are out there on the proposal, right there, so feel free. The thing is, if you need to put it on the internet, you need to put on internet.
And the seal codes have to, they have to be at proper temperature to label them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. If you shoot the motion, it'll get cold, rock will just slide right off, and it seems perfect. Now you got a swing there.
But you got your dust control going down at CS twelve, or?
Dog, we're, uh, I've got two contractors, I've got one getting set up right now, is, uh, Cave Art Construction out of, uh, Florisville, is that what it is? And then I've got ABN, uh, that's gonna be shooting that. Being the, again, the temperature, MC thirty might not work, so we're gonna go with AEP, in which works in colder temperatures and does the same product, so. That's a new product for me, so it's gonna be, let me try it, move it, so I, I can have all kinds of headaches. I did, thank you, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Report from audit results, if you have one.
These are the September and October reports. As Vi reported earlier, she has not reconciled the bank statements, so what I will be confirming are numbers as reflected in the financial system. You go to the items of interest paid on the September thirtieth report. Cash in accounts at Fall City National Bank, one hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Cash invested, thirty-eight million one hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, for a total of thirty-eight million two hundred and seventy-nine dollar, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. That includes Karn's Wilson Gymnast Probation Funds in the amount of six thousand four hundred seventy dollars and forty-six cents. Sales tax received in September twenty-fourteen, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. The sales tax received the same period in two thousand thirteen, seven hundred eight thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. That's an increase of approximately forty-one percent, two hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and two cents. We still have not received reimbursement for the legal fees from Energy Transfer in the amount of five thousand six hundred six dollars and twenty-four cents. And we also have not received the reimbursement for the Texas Historical Commission on the final draw on the west wall of the courthouse. I do believe, though, that Brambling has submitted all applicable reports that are needed, so it's just in the review phase. You go to the October thirty-first report on items of interest. Again, the cash and investments as reflected in the financial system, as the bank reconciliations have not been completed. Cash at Fall City National Bank is in the negative, one million two hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. Cash invested in all investments that CDs at Fall City National, as well as our outside investments, thirty-seven million seven hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents, for a net total of cash and investments, thirty-six million five hundred fourteen thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Included in that amount is ninety-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents of Karn's Wilson Gymnast Probation Funds. Sales tax, October twenty-fourteen, nine hundred nine thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Sales tax, October twenty-thirteen, six hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred fifty dollars and sixty-six cents, an increase of two hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents, which is approximately a forty-one percent increase. Again, the same notes, the reimbursement for legal fees from Energy Transfer is still outstanding as in the reimbursement from the Texas Historical Commission.
Can I add, what's the negative of a million dollars? What was the negative?
That's what's reflected in the system in the checking and cash accounts at Fall City National Bank.
What's the negative?
That's what's reflected in the system, Vi has not completed bank reconciliations.
When do you think the bank statements will be reconciled?
It's hard for me to answer that question, it's on my duty.
Mr. Yoder, would you like to say something?
Looks the, uh, what's the difference between the treasurer's books and your books?
The books are the same. It's one financial system that's utilized throughout the county. She does the revenue side, we do the expenditure side. All receipts of the county are processed through the treasurer's office.
So, so we're, we're in need of this, I mean, we're, I'm trying to say, we're unreconciled for a million dollars?
I don't think that's a fair statement because all receipts may not be received in, all expenditures are entered, but all receipts may not be entered into the system. We may be even in the bank, but it may not be reflected in the system yet.
This is, this is a chronic situation. You know, the, I don't know whose money's to be received. I mean, I'm not treasurer's job, I don't think it's the office's job, but I believe it is the treasurer's job. If money's not being, if money's not being deposited, received, transferred, property handling, whether there's a, we're, we're a negative million dollars. We just went through an audit where we were a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars short. We've got an investigation going on, and we, we've got a chronic situation here, and we're just sitting there, you know, miring the problems that are solved and from.
Well, it may not necessarily be a million dollars short, Maurice. It could be because of the timing of the bills that were paid October thirty-first, perhaps the treasurer did not get monies moved back into the bank from our outside investments to balance us out. That could be an issue, I don't know.
Because we have been in a negative form like that.
Overall, it has been...
Overall, right, we have, and it's just something like that.
But it may just be timing, you're getting owner funds moved.
When are we going to be hiring that financial officer that should start putting an end to some of this stuff? I haven't seen any advertisements in any papers.
The one that's gonna be under law?
No.
Reimbursement is court, okay.
The last time...
I don't know what partner's done...
Not, not the one that just joined the treasurer.
No.
The financial officer.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The last I knew, Judge Butler was working on the job descriptions to be able to do the advertisement.
But now he's not here anymore.
He said, "That's why I said, I'm not sure where he left that off."
We need to find that out, because this is, this is getting ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am.
The county attorney, they just formalized that the other day, is my understanding. I think we're waiting to get the two judges online so we can start doing things as they call.
Thank you, Shelby. Thank you, Don. That is a report on county personnel policy, Shelby.
I have this reported, and then hopefully we can start hiring, getting this information out for the HR person.
Good deal. Thank you. Addus, addus status report.
Pete?
Okay, on this, this building here, we have, we have a company, we have a bio-mechanical working on it. We've got more heating and air conditioning here in the annex service. The hallway units have been made to work better, some of the wiring was not proper, and we think that relieved the pressure on the county clerk's office and sheriff's office, because after the last lane, we didn't have the condensation problem gripping from the ceiling like we had before, after they got the hallway units working better. We have a proposal from bio-mechanical to install an independent unit in the computer room, our hallway. That gives us, it's most problematic when it's in the wintertime, when the heat is on, it gets too hot. The computer room has to be kept cool. So they will be putting a new unit just for that room. I think it's be hanging on the wall outside, the air conditioner that room. We also have a service proposal, which we hope to offer soon from bio-mechanical.
Thank you, please. I don't have anything on the recycling center, it's just that it's still in fine. And, oh, no, I am sorry, TCEQ came and met with me a couple of weeks ago in the recycling center, so I'm working with them on a couple of issues, but as soon as I come to the agreement with them, and we work out the issues, I'll let y'all know what, you know, what the status is on that. I'm working with TCEQ right now. And we may have to change it from being a recycling center to a transfer station, which means we'd have to go get permitted and all. Now, we're not permitted, but I, the meetings that I have with them, the meetings I've had with them, we came to an agreement that it wasn't a transfer station. A transfer station is because if we're taking any, any kind of trash from these oil companies, that makes it a transfer station. If we remain just taking the trash from the citizens of Karnes County, then we're, we can stay without a permit, but if we keep on taking it from these other companies, then we have to get a permit. But I'm working on that, and as soon as I get to the end of that, I'll let y'all know. Status report on permits, Tracy, Shelby.
For the month of October, we took in 46,500 on water lines entrances and road more permits.
That's it? Okay. Item number 29 is to adjourn. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I've made the motion to adjourn.
It's been made in seconds. All the favors say I can. Any opposed, like some motion, pass them to the board. Okay, thank you.
Will you give it to the-
Yeah. I figured that's what it was.